We're ready to go. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, September 1st, 2021, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Jones. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Giffens, and myself. With that, we will move on to our proclamation for Recovery Month.
Right. Whereas Recovery Month is a national observance held every September to educate Americans that treatment and services can enable those with mental health and substance use disorders to live healthy and rewarding lives. Now, in its 32nd year, Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those living in recovery. Whereas employment can play a key role in recovery and supported employment, services offer new gateways to empowerment and recovery for people across the United States. Whereas medication-assisted treatment, or MAT, is effective and can be integrated into both treatment and recovery support settings to help people in their recovery. MAT services can be integrated into clinical settings, the criminal justice system, recovery housing, and peer recovery support systems.
Whereas Monroe County takes great pride in being a member of the STRIDE Coalition and providing the space for the STRIDE Center, an alternative to incarceration for those in crisis. Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery, just as we celebrate improvements made by those who are managing other health conditions such as hypertension, diabetes, asthma, and heart disease. Recovery is different for each person. For some, it is abstinence. For some, it is harm reduction. For others, it is living through each day.
Whereas we seek to end the stigma attached to mental health challenges and substance use disorders with the goal of making it easier for people to come forward when they are ready. Keeping with the theme of this year's Recovery Month, we firmly believe that recovery is possible for everyone, every person, every family, and every community. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim September 21, 2021, as Recovery Month in Monroe County, proclaim this first day of September, 2021.
Right. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Commissioner Giffens, for putting that together. And now we will turn to department updates. First, from the Health Department, we have Ms. Hewitt. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Hey, here is our weekly update on COVID. This week, we will be one of only three counties in the state who will continue to be in yellow, even though our cases are rising. This week, our cases will be at 220 per 100,000 cases, which is almost a 100 case increase from last week's rate of 128 per 100,000 cases. Our seven-day positivity rate fell a little bit. It fell to 4.34 from 6.59 last week. And this may be due to the increase of having the increase in testing with IU students being back, their medication testing is back and forth, which potentially caused our testing positivity rate to fall. If you look at the COVID CDC data tracker, it says all of Indiana is in a high-stated transmission. And it says our cases between 8:24 and 8:30, we had 325 cases and 48 new hospital admissions for COVID. According to the state, over 90% of the cases in this state were due to people who have not yet been vaccinated, so that's only 10% in cases that were. So the breakthrough cases, there were 9,922 cases last week in Indiana, but that's still less than 0.6 of all fully vaccinated people. And of those cases, there were 458 emergency department visits, and that's 0.01%. 322 inpatient admissions are 0.01%, and 57 ICU admissions are 0.001%. So you can see that the vaccine is still providing a large amount of protection against COVID-19 illness. So the state lab continues to sequence samples to determine what variants are out there. And in this last month, over 98% of the samples were determined to be Delta. Now, the Delta is getting some Delta variants of its own, but still largely it's Delta across the board. So testing, we're continuing to work on the process of reopening the Morton Street COVID testing site and our waiting final plans with the State Department, but we're still in the midst of doing that. We did have a mobile clinic from the state last week on Friday and Saturday, and they did some pretty steady testing during the days they were here. This week, the state will have a mobile testing clinics in Putnam and Brown County if people want to visit those. State-wide, they'll be at 19 different places throughout the state. So anyone, if a company wants to request a state mobile site to visit, anybody can do that. You would just visit the state website at coronavirus.in.gov. They're only asking that there be enough state space at the site to provide both testing and vaccinations. Okay. It was last week, I believe, that Pfizer was approved for full approval from the FDA. The new name for that is Comirnaty, and that was approved for people 16 and older. Those youth that are 12 to 15 is still under emergency use authorization. But Comirnaty is now a fully approved vaccine, just like all the other vaccines that we have. Moderna and Chanson are still awaiting and in the process of trying to go through that process. That's all I have this morning.
You're muted, Julie.
Sorry. Thank you. My Ollie's getting a little crazy out here. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I just want to thank the Health Board for reinstituting the mask requirement because that has to be one of the reasons, in addition to our higher vaccination rate. It has to be one of the reasons that we're one of three counties that are in yellow. So, thank you.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Thank you so much for your report, Ms. Hewitt. And please thank everyone in your department for all their hard work. I know this is a continuing struggle for our community, and everybody has been so thoughtful and vigilant. And we really, really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you all as well.
All right. Next, we have Allison Moore from Emergency Management. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning. I'd like to start with just letting our residents know that this is the last week that individuals that were affected by the June 18th, 19th flood can apply for the Small Business Administrative Loans, which then also gives people the opportunity to possibly apply for the Indiana Disaster Relief Recovery Fund. So if you are someone out there that has not yet done that or has not finished that process, you have till September 7th. I know that there are lots of open cases, but that had not finished that paperwork. So we're trying to get in touch with all of those people and make sure that they either change their mind or went a different route and that, and make sure that they don't need assistance this last week. But if you're someone that has not started that process, we encourage you to do so right away. We do have blood drives scheduled throughout the rest of the year. This month's blood drives are at the IU Medical Arts Building. All of those dates are on our county website, so if you find one or a location that works great for you between now and the end of the year, we then encourage you to go to the Indiana, I'm sorry, the redcross.org website and make an appointment under the Board of Commissioners site. We are still leading the blood drives for the state of Indiana and are very high for the numbers of the nation. So I know that we've been solely at the convention center, and now we're kind of have to hop some locations as things have kind of started to open up a little bit. So I am excited about this and yet a little nervous because I'd love for us to continue the drives to be such a success. And I'm hoping that people in Monroe County will continue to support our drives at all the locations that we have. And those are all on our county website. It's September 1st, as we've noted, and this is also National Preparedness Month. And so the National Preparedness has placed every week something for your family to do in regards of preparedness. This year's theme is preparing for disasters is protecting everyone you love. And Week 1's theme is to build a disaster preparedness kit, which is definitely something that our office has shared in prior month suggestions. But we'll be focusing this week on what should go in that kit and, you know, where that kit could be located and those type of things. So we have a lot of information that's getting ready to go right up on our county website today. And it will allow you different links with suggestions of things that you can place in your kit for your family and things that you can do to gather that stuff for your kit. So I encourage you to check that out and to make a kit with your family or those that you love and be prepared for any disaster that may come our way. And that is all I have, Commissioners, if you have any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Just, it's wonderful news about the blood drives. Great that we're going to be able to continue them all the rest of this year.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I think that talking about emergency preparedness is especially timely, given what we've seen in Louisiana, the aftereffects of Hurricane Ida. So, very timely. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. And let's now turn to Lisa Ridge. Good morning.
Good morning. The crews right now are working on Old State Road 37 North around the hill, around the fire station. We're doing our typical patching, paving, and tree trimming. Well, actually, we just set up for snowplow training for a bunch of our new employees. So, welcome to fall and leading into winter. So if you have any questions on any certain projects, I'd be happy to take those. If you'd like to send any work requests in, again, it's on the county website at www.co-monroe.in.us, or you can call the office at 812-825-5355 and put in a request of any type of work, and we'll investigate and see if it's in our realm of duties to be able to have that completed.
Excellent. Thank you so much. How long is the North Old State Road 37 project?
They should be done in that area tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm just going to ask if the new brine system will be ready for this winter.
We sure hope so. We have been working diligently on it. The problems that we're seeing, of course, is parts, doors, the timeline on getting all those items in. I do believe, however, we have reached the point that in the next probably week or two, that we should be able to be put the bids out for a contractor to bid on it. And again, it's going to depend on their timeline because everybody is so busy with a lot of construction going on. But it's our goal to have that up and running. I feel like we really have until January. It seems like lately, November, December's been a little bit more mild, so that gives us an extra couple months. But we are working hard to have that system up and running for this season.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Let's see if there's any other departments that have an update for us. I believe Ms. Nestor Jellen from Planning. There you are. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me this morning. I just wanted to give a quick update about our Module 2 of the County Development Ordinance. We do have some upcoming meetings that I want to describe a little bit in detail for those that are listening. So our two upcoming in-person meetings are tomorrow, Thursday, at Cars Farm Park. We're hosting all of our meetings outdoors in person, requiring masks and social distancing, and we have some supplies for anyone there. But tomorrow is Cars Farm Park, 2450 South Enright Road, and it will be from 6:00 to 7:30. And that will be in the shelter house, I believe, 9A B. You can go to our Monroe County website, monroecdo.com is the best place to be when you're looking for the latest updates, and there's an exact Google Map pin to show you which shelter we'll be at, but we'll also have some wayfinding signs. The next meeting that we're also going to be hosting is at Danny Smith Shelter, which is 6,800 East State Road, 45. That meeting date is going to be Wednesday, September 8th, at 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. So we have one option for the west side and then another option for the east side. If people can find those dates to be convenient, and we'll post both of those on the monroecdo.com website. Also, to be determined, a Zoom meeting for those that are interested in attending virtually. We want to make sure that you have all the opportunities to engage. And then just a reminder, kind of what we're doing at these meetings, a report back. We had a meeting on Monday night at the Flatwoods Park. It went very well. We had 15-plus attendees, and what we ended up doing was printing out pictures of the draft zoning map so that attendees could find their parcel, look at the existing zone, look at the proposed zone, and then review the use table relating back to what's currently permitted. And we're taking all that feedback, and we're going to incorporate that into the draft of the Module 2, which will include a use table along with that draft zoning map. This is an iterative process, and we've heard from a lot of helpful feedback from people. Certainly, these won't be the only opportunities to engage, so please keep a lookout. And if you want to get regular email updates, I would encourage you to go to the monroecdo.com website and go to the Public Input page, and you can sign up for your email list there. But we're also putting it on Facebook, and then we're also hopefully getting some news coverage here and there. But yeah, we'll put it on the website and announce it for anyone that wants to call and has any questions. 812-349-2560. That'll just help us in planning a headcount as well. But I'll take any questions that Commissioners might have at this point.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nestor Jellen. And let's see if there are comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, for people who might not be able to get to one of the meetings, is there a map available on the website that will allow them to find their parcel?
Absolutely. Yes. So the draft zoning map is on the monroecdo.com website. We do have it where you can just go ahead and click on that link. And if you'd like, I can go ahead and give a quick demonstration of how to find that map. Okay.
Sure. Ms. Dayton, if you can let her share her screen.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton.
Okay, so this is the homepage of the monroecdo.com webpage. And actually, right here, the latest update, you can find the draft zoning map at this link. And then, once the site loads, you're able to kind of zoom in on a parcel or search it by address here. If you want to just kind of review around your county or township area, you can zoom in on a parcel. Click on that parcel, and it will tell you the proposed zoning, the previous zoning. And then there's also a link to the feedback survey in our CDO website. So if you actually click the feedback survey, it will automatically populate the parcel number. You're welcome to leave your name, address, and also a level of satisfaction that you have, and additional comments. So we definitely encourage people to utilize the survey as a way to give their feedback remotely. But if anyone just has trouble or wants to contact us, we've also been taking phone calls. At our office, we have eight to four Planner of the Day scheduling hours. We've had many calls and interested people that have an address. We can tell them exactly what their existing zone, what the proposed zone is, and talk through with them any information that they might have questions on. So that's also a good way to engage, and that has, you know, that'll be ongoing.
Thank you. That's very useful.
Commissioner Giffens?
I know Ms. Nestor Jellen has been her normal thorough self here, so thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate you a whole bunch. Thank you so much. And we will be looking forward to seeing some folks hopefully at Cars Farm Park and then next week at Danny Smith's on East State Road 45. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other department heads have an update for us today? I do not see any. So with that, I will move on to our next item, which is public comment. Public comment is for items that are not on our agenda. The time limit is three minutes per person. And at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will be hearing a tone. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And at that tone, that means you have 30 seconds left to finish up and wrap up your thoughts and ideas and your comment. There's also going to be a stopwatch, a countdown clock timer on the screen to help you. So with that, let's see if there's anyone in the public who wishes to make a comment on an item not on our agenda. And as I'm waiting, I will note that the same three-minute time limit holds for each of our agenda items. I do not see any. So with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 6, please.
Move to approve the minutes for August 25th, 2021.
Second, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any comments, edits, corrections? All right, seeing none. Mr. Popper, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for August 25th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
The claims stack accounts payable, September 1st, 2021.
Second, we have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. The total was $1,268,465. Approximately 74% of that total was for fund-to-fund transfers and distribution of funds, so don't let that scare you completely. The most notable amount was $500,000 for a fund-to-fund transfer from Rainy Day to Next Level Trails for the 8/24 council meeting, followed by $240,720.92 for wheel and cert tax distribution for the month of July, and finally, $198,622.43 in keepers tax distribution for August.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I just was surprised at the number of claims that the airport filed this month.
That happens. All right. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand in Zoom screen. You will have three minutes to make comment. I do not see any. Thank you, Mr. Miller. And so with that, we will, Mr. Popper, will you please call the roll on approval of the claims stack accounts payable, September 1st, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will note for the record that we have received a report from the Clerk of the Circuit Court, and that report covers July 2021. And now we move on to new business. Item A, please.
Move to approve the revised Board of Health Regulation.
Second, we have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Rice here from the Legal Department. And one of her tasks is to work with the Health Board. So, good morning, and please tell us all about this.
Yes. So, as you know, state law changed, so it makes Board of Health orders or local Board of Health orders that are stricter than something that the governor has in place. It requires them to be approved by the local legislative body, which is you guys. And so last Board of Health meeting, they updated, just tweaked the mask order a little bit to clarify that signage in public places needs to be at all doors, including those that just staff use and also at the public entrances. And they also just clarified that the requirements for school applies to all schools, including public and private. So with those two changes, we're bringing it back to you for approval. The original mask order's been in place in effect since the original passage by you guys. And if you approve this one today, this one will be the one that takes effect. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. That seems fairly clear.
Commissioner Giffens?
I just want to point out to the public that this also has the end date of September 30th. And then if things really improve, so that we go back into the blue metric, that it also, the order will cease. So this is not an indefinite order at this point.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's great to point out as well. And, you know, Penny Cotto and I have talked about the staff resources. And to the extent that we can keep our numbers low, staff will be able to concentrate more on encouraging vaccinations and, you know, those sorts of things. So we would love to see ourselves get back with community's help, back into a blue metric, so that maybe a mask mandate isn't required but is encouraged, and that the Health Department could spend its time and resources trying to get the number of vaccinations in our county up. So it's a thing that we all have to do together. We have to work together. And I appreciate your support of this order because I do think it's helped to keep Monroe County residents safe.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much. Good points. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Each commenter is limited to three minutes. Please raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And I do not see any hands raised. So with that, Mr. Popper, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve the revised Board of Health Regulations?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve CDW.GLLC Agreement for Sheriff Department Car-Mounted Laptops. Fund name: Public Safety Lit. Fund number: 1170-0068, in the amount of $198,900.
Second, we have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Eric Evans here from Technical Services Department, our director. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, everybody. So what this is, is our refresh for the in-car laptops that the road deputies use. We're ordering enough for the entire Sheriff's Department and the reserves. Essentially, for those that don't know, these are called MDTs, which stand for Mobile Data Terminal. But they're basically laptops that have been ruggedized to deal with spending their life bouncing around in a car. The particular brand is a company that specializes in making these types of things. I've got friends up in the IT department in Allen County. They, about a year ago, deployed about 100 of these and have been very happy with them, very happy with the service that the company has offered after the fact. Each of these MDTs will have a three-year bumper-to-bumper warranty. So, and will also have a couple extras. So if a deputy has a problem with their laptop, we can swap them out, get them back on the road, and then RMA the laptop back to the company. So it's a pretty good deal. It also includes the mounting hardware. It does not include the installation of the mounting hardware, which typically is done by some sort of automotive expert-type person. It does not include the installation of the mounting hardware, which typically is done by some sort of automotive expert type person. I think Greg will probably help me find the company that'll do that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just glad to see this happening, keeping those going. Keeps everyone safer.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I think with some of the unrest that we've seen, that this is a really positive thing to do. I also want to thank you, Ms. Evans. Last week when there was a fiber cable cut, you were on top of it. You and your department, all of you, just took care of it. While it was frustrating to have our emails down, it was minimized. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It was definitely a team effort. And while it's unfortunate that we have crises like that, it is always nice to see my people, you know, shift into crisis containment mode. And every time that happens, I'm grateful for the people that work with me.
Absolutely. You have a great team, Ms. Evans, and great leadership helps. And I would say as well that that could have been a multiple day incident and it wasn't. And the next downtime was just after business hours on Friday and it was short. So amazing work, really, considering what happened and what you had to deal with. So thank you so much for all of that. And this is something that we had originally thought this item, we would put in the bond. But this is a great use of public safety lit money. And I think this ability to communicate will help everyone in the Sheriff's Department. So thank you so much for all of that hard work on getting this proposal put together. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen, please. Through here. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Popper, will you please call the roll on the CDW.GLLC Agreement for the Sheriff's Department Car Mounted Laptops?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
One. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Move to approve ratification of Resolution 2021-41, expressing intent to form a precinct and district review committee.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Good morning, Mr. Popper. Will you please tell us all about it?
Well, and again, I think we discussed this last week at the work session. The really, the intent of this resolution is to let people know we're going, that you guys are working on putting together a formal committee to look at the precincting and district boundaries for the county. Once that information is available from the state, we received information from the state that our normal timeframe is six months and it'll be likely closer to six weeks this year. So we really want to get a lot of the groundwork done prior to that and getting people to apply for this important function is paramount. And so this is just announcing the intent, the intention to do that with the kind of formal documentation coming that will follow in a hopefully a few weeks.
Excellent. It's a good time to encourage people to apply if you are interested, if you've served done as community pastor, if you have some special skill or talent that will help us, we would love your input. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I just think that we're fortunate to be able to get this organized in a way that as soon as we're ready to go, we can, we can turn that key.
Yeah, absolutely. And we don't have that data yet that we're going to need, but getting going is important at this point. So excellent work and thank you for writing this up, Mr. Popper. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the zoom screen. Looks like we have Mr. Turner from the Election Board. There you are. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Well, thank you and yourself.
Very good. Very good. I'm excited that we're going through this reprecincting. It's a, it's a, a 10-year event that's very, very important to the community to make sure that we have fairness in voting for every resident. You indicated that there would be a committee forming, but I didn't hear how people could apply to that committee. Could you please clarify that? Thank you.
Yes. Great point. Thank you, Mr. Turner. The, we were asking folks to fill out our standard board and commission application form, which is available at co.munroe.in.us and you can just search board and commission application to find it. And it's also available through a link on the commissioners' webpage on the county website. So thank you for that. Okay, let's see if there's any other comments or questions. I don't see any. So with that, Mr. Popper, will you please call the roll on ratification of Resolution 2021-41?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-43, Issuance of General Obligation Bonds.
Second, we have a motion and we have a second. We'll start here with Mr. Popper. If you tell us about this and then we'll go to Ms. Purdy.
Yes, as part of the bonding process, the county commissioners have to approve a resolution that essentially authorizes the issuance of it or approves the issuance of it. And then it goes to the county council for both a formal bond ordinance and an appropriation ordinance. This is kind of the first step. It needs to occur prior to the council's actions. And our timeline is built because to have these bonds sold prior to Thanksgiving, because after Thanksgiving, the the market gets a little different and you don't know which way it's going to go. I think the other thing is we also want to make sure that the council has the ability to review and look at this prior to them setting the tax rates and levies, because this is all part of that process.
Excellent. Thank you for that great explanation. And indeed, we've been, we've attended a few council meetings in the recent past to talk through some of those projects that are on the list. And so if we could turn to Ms. Purdy, can you go through and review those projects for the public? You are muted, Ms. Purdy.
Okay. All right. Can you see my screen?
Or no?
We can.
Awesome. All right. So these are the projects that you guys looked at for this, this new bond for the 2021 projects and starting off with the health building. As you know, we did renovations already in the health building. And so our health department, whilst dealing with a pandemic, something brand new for most people, also was dealing with having to live offsite and not having their normal surroundings around them. But they're in a nice usable space now, but we still have work that needs to be done on this building. I've got a picture here of the loading dock. This roof is actually beginning to topple. There's all kinds of issues with the stone and just the general safety of this particular space. We're also going to look at the interior of the building as you come in to help it, make it sure that it's easier for people to access and get to where they need to be going. And then obviously, the outside of the of the building is in need of some repair to help people to get in and out. And let's see here. We're also going to, this is showing, let's see here. I'm trying to get to know what happens. Can you see that?
It's not moving. We're still on the same, hopefully, bar point.
Yeah, let me see here. Let me go back to, you know, some people have good. Some people are good at some things and others are good at others. This is not my, let's see here. Slide show. I don't know why. Hey, there we go. Awesome. Okay. Minor stress there. The next item is to upgrade our virtual clusters. And this is what helps to provide the redundancy in our, in our software and our, all of our data that we retain by the county. And so this will help ensure that we have copies of that in the event of a problem that we can keep moving forward, not be stuck in our, in our steps. This item, actually, we're not entirely sure. Council might actually elect to cover this out of currently unappropriated funds. If they don't use that for, if, if it's not included in here, if council does in fact use it, let's pay for it out of unappropriated funds, this money will then go on to offset the cost of an upcoming slide here for a stormwater vac truck. So just to let you know, it'll help to, that will be moved along if, if in fact the council approves the appropriation for parks. Fleets, this is actually our non-law enforcement vehicles for our county vehicles allows for that replacement. We'll be replacing a minimum of eight vehicles from 1996 to 2016. And for the record, the 2016 has an excess of 100,000 miles and it belongs to Parks and Rec, who was on the prior slide. We're also looking at improving our solar infrastructure within the county. We're looking at solar electric plug-in sites for vehicles. Our highway department showers and adding additional units in our county garage. We already have some there. Putting solar panels on additional county structures, possibly adding covered parking at showers that would feed directly into then those solar electric plug-in sites. And possibly solar charging stations at our county parks and along trails. Highway, highway is in need of equipment, mini excavator, grader, low boy. And then they have actually two projects that they are looking at, design work for Bachelor sidewalk connection. This is the project that will help to connect the Lee from Library in Bachelor. And then the trail connection between Liberty Drive to Karst is again, an ongoing project with the Karst Trailway. Here's stormwater and the bond itself could not afford to pay for the entire cost of this particular truck, which is in excess of $300,000. So we'll have 161,000 is guaranteed, 800 from the bond at this point in time. And there may be actually 27,400, I believe, from parks that will actually, or it might be the full amount that would then be credited to this 161. So they could have up to 200,000 for the cost of the stormwater truck. Parks again, this is for Flatwoods specifically. They're going to be looking, having engineering and they're going to have an ADA redesign and replacement of the playground equipment. And if there's sufficient funding left, they will use that money to work on interior trails. It's going to act as a trailhead for the Monroe County and Oa County Trail. So that is all of the $3 million projects that you guys are proposing to council. Council has heard of these projects on, I believe, at least three times in formal meetings. And I've also sent it to them to have and be able to respond to electronically if they have any questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that presentation, Ms. Purdy, as always. Great work. And let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
All of these projects seem needed and pretty exciting to get taken care of.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I, I was describing this vacuum truck to somebody recently and I wish I'd had the picture of it to show them because these are huge and, and it's hard to explain about why they're needed at times out on the roads.
Definitely. And I appreciate that we're finding some way to at least help pay for that, that that truck, because even though there's been a change in the stormwater fee, it's better to use that money for projects if we can secure equipment with a bond. Great work. And let's see if there are any comments or questions from the public. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Popper, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2021-43?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve ratification of Michael Chambley Architectural Services Agreement. Fund name: GeoBond. Fund number: 4811. In an amount not to exceed $30,165.
Second, we have a motion and we have a second and we have Ms. Purdy.
Yes, again, this is a ratification. This was brought to you, I believe, two weeks ago, actually, at the work session in order to get this project moving. And this is our proposal for moving our highway department from showers out to the recently vacated emergency operations center, because they now have their own new place that they can go to, so at the highway garage. And this is just a basic start of the project. It was going to be the design phase and determine the needs for furniture spacing things of that nature. So this is just kind of the beginning.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, well, I would like to comment that, of course, most of the highway vehicles and people who use them are already at the garage. This is the administrative part of highway that will be moving to the garage. And I hope they enjoy their new home. When it's ready.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes. Have we used Michael Chambley before?
We have, right? Yes, yes, we have used him. He, he did our health building renovation. And he was brought to us actually by highway. I think they had dealt with Michael in prior instances. And his attention to detail is beyond reproach. He's really been really appreciative of the work that he does, his communication and the final project. It's lovely.
Excellent. Yeah. And I think this is just a testament to how much goes into creating space, moving departments. It doesn't just happen with a magic wand. It takes coordination and it takes time to do it right. So I think I appreciate the effort that's already gone into this. And I think this is going to be great for the highway department. It's great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Okay, seeing none, I'll come back to the board.
Is Ms. Brown's hand raised? There was a hand on her.
No.
It might be your cursor.
Oh, you were right. I apologize. My fault.
Excellent. I was like, I check. All right. Thank you. With that, Mr. Popper, will you please call the roll on ratifying the Michael Chambley Architectural Services Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
And I appreciate Ms. Purdy knew that that's what that was, because I never thought that.
I certainly did not.
All right. So next on our agenda, our appointments, and we do So next on our agenda, our appointments, and we do have one. Commissioner Jones, if you would, please.
Yes, I move that we appoint Byron Turner to the Affordable Housing Commission.
Second.
No motion, and we have a second. We thank Mr. Turner for applying. We appreciate his willingness to serve. Mr. Cockrell, we please call the role on the appointment.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Well, thank you so much. I have a number of announcements today. First and foremost, the unsafe building hearing that was scheduled for noon has been canceled. That's the unsafe building hearing scheduled for noon today that has been canceled. Commissioner Giffens, do you want to talk about Paint the Town?
Yes, this Friday evening, on the courthouse lawn, starting at 6 o'clock, we'll be celebrating National Recovery Month with Paint the Town Purple. There'll be food trucks, games, photo booth, lots of just different activities. It's family-oriented, free, as you mentioned that, free. And I think actually, when we go to our break before the work session, there'll be something up on the screen that also tells people about this. But we weren't able to do this last year due to COVID, but the one two years before was well-attended. And it's nice to be able to do these kinds of things at the courthouse.
Yeah, excellent. It's a great event. So grateful that it's being, that it's going to happen again this year. Thank goodness it's outdoors. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate. I want to note that the Township Assistance Fund is continuing to operate. So if anybody has a need to pay for basic necessities, things like rent and utilities, other related necessary bills, please contact your township trustee. Every county resident lives in a township, whether they live in the city, a town, or neither. So please contact your township trustee for information. And the contact list is available in each of our minutes, but also available at co.munro.in.us at the Emergency Management webpage. I will also remind everyone again, something that we've heard at the top of our meeting, that the next meeting of residents to consider and look at the proposed zoning in the county's development ordinance. The next meeting is Thursday, September 2nd, tomorrow, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. That's at Karst Farm Park, 2450 South and Wright Road. It's shelter 9A B, but look for signs. You will find the signs all the way in as they did at Flatwoods. And you can go to monroe.cdo.com for more information as well. There will be another meeting next week on East State Road 45, and then there'll be at least one Zoom meeting. And this is really just the initial process of just getting community input before the plan commission really even starts to talk about it at length. So it's very important to get your input in now. Also, for those county residents outside the city who are being targeted for annexation, we want to remind you that we do have some annexation information on our website, co.munro.in.us. We encourage those residents who are targeted for annexation to stay informed. And there are some petition signings, opportunities available through the County Residents Against Annexation Group at the Fire Station 39, which is 2130 South Kirby, right at the airport there. Today, tomorrow, and September 7th, from 5:30 to 7:30, you just go to the fire station. The South Kennedy Drive parking lot for the fire department, 3953 South Kennedy Drive. That, there will be another opportunity to sign petitions. These are not remonstrances, these are petitions, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. there. And on the 12th, there will be another opportunity as well. So we'll keep you posted on those. And we are accepting applications for boards and commissions. And as you heard today, the redistricting committee is a very important one, and we encourage residents to complete the border commission, board and commission application, and just use redistricting committee as the board or commission that you are looking to apply for. And we encourage you to submit those applications as soon as possible. But we are also looking for residents who are interested in serving on other boards and commissions, including Drainage Board, Affordable Housing, and others as well. So if you are interested, please do so. I know another one that we're looking for is Economic Development Commission. So colleagues, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Giffens, did I miss anything? I'm sure I did.
I don't believe so. You were pretty thorough.
I always have a list.
I do want to, I forgot to say one thing about the Paint the Town Purple. We are asking people to wear face masks, even though it's outside. We want to maintain that, that yellow status on the state's website. We don't want this to be a super-spreader event of any sort. So please come, but please wear your face mask.
I'm also glad you mentioned that. That's great. Ah, yes.
Yes, so sorry. Offices will be closed on Monday.
Yes, oh, yes, Labor Day, right? Thank you. Yes, our offices are closed on Labor Day. You know, you would have thought that would have been first and foremost in my mind. Thank you for the reminder. Yeah, Monroe County offices will be closed for Labor Day. And we will be here on September 8th, 10:00 a.m. on the same Zoom channel for our next meeting. We are, work session, how does 11:15 sound for my colleagues to start our work session? Excellent. So our work session will begin at 11:15 a.m. And a reminder, please get vaccinated. All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.